Good evening. At this time, we will entertain a motion to move from executive session into our work session.
No, you're just going to declare yourself back in.
Oh, you just declared.
Can't motion out of it.
Okay, I was declared, okay. Sorry. So now we are in work session.
There you go.
And Mr. Holbrook?
Yes, Mr. President. We have several different presentations for you tonight. The first is, we're going to give you an update on our Virtual Learning Institute. And Mr. Pate, our Senior Executive Director for Secondary Programs, is here this evening to give you an update on where we are with virtual learning, some of the things that we've learned through the first quarter, some of the things that are challenges through the first quarter, and what we're going to do to proceed with that. So, Mr. Pate, I'm going to turn it over to you at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holbrook. Good evening, Board. Appreciate you guys having me here, and I'm happy to give you an update about our Virtual Learning Institute. And as Mr. Holbrook said, kind of where we're at, some of the challenges that we faced, but also kind of how we're forging through those challenges, and hopefully, you know, coming out ahead at this, you know, at this time and moving forward. So, if we look back at the creation of the VLI, we created the Virtual Learning Institute to provide that additional instructional option for families who had health and safety concerns for their child or their children due to the COVID-19 pandemic, okay? It was a great idea because we had a lot of families that were reaching out and saying that they wanted another option. And I was a big fan of doing this, and I'm glad that Mr. Holbrook gave me an opportunity to help lead this for the district. So, as we got this up and running, we had 2,600 students fill out the enrollment forms. So, when you put that into perspective, that is when our high school, our main campus is at full capacity, and our freshman campus is at full capacity. That's how big the VLI is, or those two buildings combined, pre-COVID, okay? To give a perspective, but the extra challenge that comes with it is it's grades K through 12, not just 9 through 12. Initially, we pulled 73 teachers from the buildings to staff the Virtual Learning Institute. We needed to do that because obviously, students are not going to be able to learn on their own. They're going to need assistance, guidance, intervention, support, so on and so forth, from staff members. As the numbers kept coming in, we did need to add an additional four special education or intervention specialist teachers for our students with disabilities. We pulled those students just a couple of weeks back, which puts us to a grand total of 77 teachers in the Virtual Learning Institute. So, again, roughly 26 students still as of today, 77 staff members, you know, educating those children. Some of our general findings and issues that we've experienced, there was just honestly, a general misunderstanding of what the Virtual Learning Institute was, all right? We tried to curb that by doing orientations that parents had to attend, and shout out to Mr. Dustin Monday for doing those orientations. He conducted, I believe, up to 20 face-to, well, virtual, but face-to-face over the computer orientations, and also then recorded an orientation for parents to watch because the demand was just higher than he could possibly meet with that many groups of families and parents. It was no fault of his, but there was just a general misunderstanding about the VLI. Many families, I think, thought it was going to be what fourth quarter was last year, where there was a classroom teacher still assigning assignments, and they would maybe be in a Google Classroom here or there and working on things. And even though we tried to articulate that that's not what it was, I think we still had some of that misunderstanding. I think some families thought it was what our blended, our hybrid model is right now. They were still going to come to school a couple of days, and then they were going to be working at home a couple of days. Again, I think just an honest misunderstanding. I don't blame anyone for that. I think some families thought that this was going to be an easier route, or maybe their child didn't like school. Saw this as an option for their child to continue their education, and maybe as a new, kind of a fresh angle to be educated because they don't generally do well or don't enjoy coming to school. So, I think those were some of the misunderstandings. Some other findings that we found is that edgenuity requires a significant parent involvement for especially our young learners to be successful. And when I say significant, I mean probably three to four hours a day of parents actively engaged with the children, helping them complete their work, uploading and downloading PDFs, sending those PDFs to teachers, a lot of those kind of things, okay? We are finding that many of our parents, and again, no fault of theirs, they're working, they're doing what they can to provide their families. Some of them haven't been in school for a really long time themselves, and they're doing their very best. And I want families that see this and hear this to know, I know they're doing their very best. But many of them just are not going to be able to provide that support that many of our students need. Edgenuity is very rigorous. At its creation, you know, over a decade ago, edgenuity was born out of the idea that teachers felt that online learning platforms were not as rigorous as what they were doing in the classroom. They were easy grades, easy credits. We want something that mirrors more of the rigor we have in the classroom, and that's what edgenuity did. The problem is, is that it's very rigorous, right? It's a two-sided, it's very rigorous. There are large volumes of student work. I have children myself that are in the Virtual Learning Institute. They are taking the courses. It's a lot of work. It's pushing them, it's challenging them, and that's important for the Board to understand that this is a very difficult and volume-heavy platform, okay? It is very challenging for our students to keep pace right now. Another issue we're running into is many of our students are not logging in regularly to the program. So, like anything else, if you're learning a new skill, whether it's riding a bike, juggling, or anything else, if you're not staying with it and you're not practicing a lot, you will struggle to get better. Right now, a lot of our students are not logging in regularly, and that's adding to the stress of not staying up on pace and not maybe being where they would like to be at this time. The other general finding is that staff comfortability and virtual learning vary significantly, right? We have staff members that have jumped into this right away, and it's second nature to them, and it's just easier for them. We have other staff members that, again, are doing their very, very best. They are trying their hearts out, and they are putting in hours and hours of time, but it's new for them. It's a new challenge for them, and they are sticking with it. I'm so proud of our VLI staff. But there is a continuum there of people, our staff, who are comfortable with technology, and others that are trying to get comfortable with technology, and that's understandable. So, there's some charts here, and this changes every single day. This was as of yesterday, so it's going to be close, right? But it does change a little bit. But there are two charts here for you. One on the left side is pace. So, are students on track? Are they falling off track, et cetera? So, if you look there, 67% of our students right now are 0 to 20% behind, which isn't awful, right? And they are gaining ground, just so you know, every day. It took a while to get this ship up and flying here, and it is getting better. Every day, it gets better and better, okay? 32% of our students are on pace where they should be, and we have just a little sliver there that was too small to even tell you what the percentage was, are significantly behind. And what we are finding is those are the students that are not logging in for a variety of reasons, okay? On the right-hand side there, you will see the average grade right now in the courses. So, the green, which is 40%, is above a 70% in their courses. So, we have 40% of our kids are above a 70%, 14% are between a 50 and a 70%, and 46% right now have a grade of lower than 50% in those courses, right? So, obviously, we want to see that shift, and we want to see more green, right, than we see red up there. And it is going to be getting better and better as the kids get into it more. There's less missing assignments, et cetera. They will get better at that. This is just another chart that kind of combines those things together. Your blue bar there, line, is the grade above 70%. So, you are seeing where it started at back in August, and it is on an upward trajectory as kids are getting better and they're completing more assignments and they're understanding the platform, and you're kind of getting over that learning curve of sorts there, all right? You also see the green line there is the students that are on pace. So, obviously, when you start this thing, everybody's not, they're behind pace because you have zero done, right? You can see that it's up on an upward trend or trajectory as well, getting closer and closer to being on pace. And then the red line there is the students that are being active. So, they're, in every couple of days at least, they're logging into that platform. Our expectation is that they log in every day. We're not there yet. We are working on that. But you can see that that red line is generally on that upward trend as well, where students are starting to log in more regularly, completing their assignments, learning the material as they go forward. So, we've had some challenges, and I don't want to speak disparagingly on our vendor, but we've had some issues with edgenuity. I think it's fair as Board members that you understand that. We're in charge of this district and what we spend money on and what choices we make as far as providers, and edgenuity has been a challenge. And I would be lying to you if I said anything other than that. We're working through it, and Dustin and I are going to overcome this no matter what, but it has been a challenge, okay? We learned just last week that Dustin in particular never received any of the training, that he was supposed to have received running the technical side of the platform. We finally were able to get ahold of, I think his title's the Vice President of Eastern, the Eastern Division or something. Everything east of the Mississippi is what he's in charge of. He started asking some really tough questions of his team and asking why we haven't been supported in the way we should have been. And he's really getting us some movement. I felt like we made more ground with him in about 18 hours than we did in four weeks previously. So, we are making movement. We also... Most definitely. Chime in whenever, guys.
This is the work session. So, is this a situation where the company is overextended? I mean, it seems like a lot of districts are going to this type of situation, a lot of school districts. Is this a situation where they're overextended?
I believe so, yes. And I think that with almost all things, virtual learning for school side of things and vendor sides of things, it was such a short window of time to turn things around. But I would say, they're the vendor. Their job is to meet our demand. They sold us the product. They need to come through on their product on there, and that's my opinion, and that's just me speaking for myself. But they told us they would be able to do it, and they didn't initially anyways. Mr. Holbrook, you were going to say something?
Overpromise, underdeliver.
Yeah, yeah.
Matt, I already interrupted you once.
No, no, feel free.
On that second page on the previous thing, I mean, obviously, you're not happy, I don't think we're happy with some of these things. Is this something that we're seeing in a lot of other districts? I know that you guys communicate with other districts. I'm assuming a lot of districts are having problems with the whole concept of self-guided instruction.
Yeah. You know, Lauren, I don't think that any educator, you are an educator yourself. I don't think any of us would ever sit here and say that the optimal environment for, general speaking, would be a virtual learning environment for students. Now, I do have later in a slide, I do think that there is a small percentage of students that this is a good niche for them. I think this is a, it works for them.
I mean, we have to offer it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I think that there are students that it actually works pretty well for, but generally speaking, I don't think any of us would have woken up and said, "I think we need to shift all these kids to a virtual learning environment," if it had been our choice, right? So, yeah, it's a universal problem, not just in the region, but across the state and probably across the country. But we don't talk much to those individuals across the country, but I'm sure it's the same.
Just one other question. Are the other districts around here using the same edgenuity or edgenuity?
There's a wide range of vendors that are out there. There are other vendors, or there are other districts that use edgenuity. There are other products. Apex is another big one that's out there. You also have what the Butler County ESC is offering to the various districts that they're working with, which is another product. So, there are many out there that we could look at. Why we went with edgenuity, to be very clear, and I'll tell you why it makes me mad here in a second, is most of them don't have a elementary component. Most of the virtual world, the edgenuities of the world, they're very strong in 7 through 12. They've been doing it for years. We've needed for credit recovery purposes, graduation. You know, it's what we use at the Miami School. It's what we use in our credit recovery lab at Hamilton High School. We use the MyPath version, which is the middle school version at both Wilson and Garfield. The product is always, has always actually been a good product for us. I think, as Mr. Holbrook said, it was just more than they could handle, and the K through 5 world has been the big challenge. And I'll talk about that in just a minute, but that's why we really went with edgenuity, is no one else has an elementary version. So, obviously, we want to provide that opportunity for our young learners and their families that had concerns about health and safety. And it's the one that had that option for us to consider, okay? To move forward here, edgenuity also provided us the appropriate level of access to enroll our students. So, Dustin and I could, Mike?
Two minutes.
Okay. They have access to actually upload students the way we needed to, which caused a lot of problems. So, I'm going to speed through. Workbooks are still an issue. They're not being delivered on time. And the bottom bullet point there, I think, is important when I talked about the K to 5. We learned way after the fact that what edgenuity is using in K to 5 isn't even their own product. It's a third-party vendor selling another third-party vendor's product. So, when we call to ask them support questions, understandably, they say, "We don't know," because it's not their product. So, I liken it a little bit to, if you have a Ford truck, you really can't call a Honda company and ask them why the transmission's not working in your Ford truck. They're going to say, "We build Hondas. I have no idea," right? So, that's what we've experienced a little bit. We, so the next slide to keep going on, a line he gave me. We are having staff meetings weekly with both elementary and secondary staff to support them, try to answer their questions, help them through technical issues that they're having. We are also going to be creating, or we have created, lead teacher positions to allow teachers to have that go-to person to get immediate response and help. And then if that person doesn't know the answers to questions, they will then reach out to Dustin and I, and it just kind of helps with the efficiency of things. Some positive lights real quick. The creation and the enrollment that we saw in the Virtual Learning Institute, I believe, had a very positive effect on us having an effective and efficient hybrid rollout that we did as a district, right? 2,600 kids going to virtual learning kept those class sizes small in the hybrid model, and hopefully, I think, helped minimize that risk of spreading the virus because we had less bodies in the building. So, it did what the intention was, which was to try to help us have a safe and healthy rollout to the start of the school year. The VLI technology skills of the 77 teachers and the two leaders that are leading it. We're learning things every day that we will be able to take forward, back into the classrooms, back into our leadership roles, that will benefit the district. So, it's not all for bad. We are learning through this struggle, and that's good. And what they're, VLI is actually a good learning environment for a small portion of our students. We do have parents calling us and praising us for doing this and having it, and their child's thriving in a way they've never thrived before, and some of those things. So, it's not all bad. There are some good things that are coming out of it. Last slide here, I'll talk about, that really, we, as I said to Lauren earlier, virtual learning is not the best for everybody. We knew that. And the elementary students have had the most challenge because they're young, right? And they need a lot of hand-holding as they go through, and that's hard virtually as you go through things. As fast as I could do it there, sorry.
The Wi-Fi hotspot, has that been working well or not?
Yes and no, Mag. They work. The issue that we're running into with that, and we're actually going to send out some communication. Tricia Smith should be sending that out tomorrow, actually. The issue we're running into with the MiFi's is that families are trying to run every device in their house off of that Wi-Fi, okay? So, they're streaming their movies, their various tablets, home computers, you know, all these other things. They're really designed to provide the bandwidth necessary for that student's device, or maybe two, right, if you have siblings, to really effectively run those. They're not designed to run an entire house. And so, the issues that we are seeing, where students are getting dropped out of the program or during map testing that we did and some different things, when we've called and talked to those families, you know, we're also streaming our YouTube TV and things on it. Well, it's not going to do that. It's not going to hold up. So, we're going to communicate better with families what their capacity is, I think, is the biggest issue. But yeah, they've gone well. A few haven't worked, like any technology piece, but we've exchanged those back at the Home Building Media Centers very quickly. And those students typically are only losing a portion of a day of access before we can rotate a new one in there.
Rick, I just want to thank you and your team on this because I know, I know we sort of pushed this as fast as we could with everything involved. And it did give parents a viable option for safety for their children to stay home instead of coming to the schools. And I think a lot of parents, what I've heard is a lot of parents are appreciative of that because they had no other options whatsoever. So, I appreciate you guys' hard work on getting, getting the company to, let's get going, guys. Let's get going. And it's a learning experience. This has all been a learning experience. So, I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pate.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda, just due to social distancing and really limiting the number of folks that we have in our buildings, I don't believe our Board members and many of our community members have had an opportunity to visit any of our classrooms in our buildings. And so, I asked Mrs. Copus to create a collage, basically, of what's going on out in our buildings. And so, she's going to take a few minutes, and I know we have every building, we made sure we had every building represented, but to try to give you an idea of what's going on out in our buildings during this pandemic that maybe you haven't had the opportunity to see, which is not typical, but nevertheless necessary, given what we're dealing with.
So, as Mike said, since you can't go out in the buildings and classrooms, we thought we'd bring them out to you. And we're starting this most unusual school year. Stop the spread. Wear a mask, Hamilton High says. I think. First off, I give kudos to Jeff Kilby. He worked hard to get the signage out to the schools. We had about 50 of those two-by-three-foot laminated signs all around the common areas and hallways of the schools with the three things, wear your mask, stay six feet apart, wash your hands. And then also, we have these 12-inch squares that are in both the hallways inside and then also outside the buildings. And they're like sandpaper sort of grannies so people don't slip. But again, they are six feet apart to show, make sure everybody do their due diligence in social distancing. So, he worked hard to order those, get those out to the buildings. Also, Cindy Gorbant did some signage too for the lunch lines, both circular and then the arrows would say, "Walk this way." And they're both in English and Spanish too, which is very nice. And you can see, like, Garfield's main hallway, they were creative in dividing the hallways with one-way traffic for the better traffic flow. And again, that terrazzo floor is 61 years old. It shines just as good as it does the day they put it in there, so. Other preparations, we talked about, we distributed about 9,700 of the Chromebooks, about 1,500 of the Wi-Fi spots for those that don't have the internet access, and Rick made reference to that. And then the administrators, you see Jesse Wisegrove, Jesse Funston, they're checking the Chromebooks, much like you do a library book. So, each student has a designated Chromebook. And again, they use it in the hybrid model. You see them in all the various classrooms. You see social distancing, students wearing their masks. So, they work the Chromebooks the two days they're in school, and then they, you know, continue on the three days at their home. I like the picture at the bottom left. A lot of the elementary schools tell the students, "Act like we're a helicopter, an airplane," and that's how they can do their social distancing. But even at the high school level, you know, you see the students, social distancing, wearing their masks. So, I think, you know, first five, six, seven weeks, we've done pretty good on that. And then, you know, everybody was worried, you know, we need mask breaks. And, you know, you can see they're learning outside as well. They're reading outside. The teacher takes them out. They can take their masks off for a few minutes. Freshman campus, they have designated spots for students to stand. And then Fairwood Elementary, I love this because I used to play red light, green light when I was a little girl. Who thought it would come back 50 years later? But again, recess, they're able to get out and work and take a mask break. And then the other one is just Ridgeway students outside taking a mask break on the hill. Again, outdoor learning on the bottom left. Bridgeport was fortunate to get 60 molded plastic tables donated by Neil and Honey Cohen. And so, the teachers are doing an outdoor learning station, so we thank the Cohens for that. In math class at Garfield, they were doing angles, so the guy took his mask off and was showing a right angle. And then at Brookwood, at the bottom there, you have some students taking advantage of the amphitheater that are carpentry class made several years ago for them. And then if you also look closely, they're up on the hill with their towels and reading a book. So, I think it's, teachers have been very creative in doing outdoor learning and taking advantage of mask breaks. Fine Arts, I'm not sure what that is, but it's an outdoor mural at Hamilton High. I don't know if it's a squirrel, a skunk, but anyhow, they were outside doing that, so of course, they could take their masks off. And then what I noticed in the art classes, since they can't share their school supplies or art supplies, teachers would have individual portfolios for the students to put their pencils or crayons in. And so, they're doing a good job with that. And then, again, band class, using Chromebooks, social distancing, wearing their masks. Alex McIntosh, the music teacher at Crawford Woods, were teaching kindergarten students about xylophones. Rapsody and Blue were working their choreography, again, distance. And then, of course, Garfield Middle School out there, they were able, we've had such nice dry weather, the kids have been able to get out, so we are fortunate that way. Bathroom breaks, again, they're able to separate. And you can see in most of these pictures too, again, those large signs that they have in the main areas, common areas. River View's coming in from recess. Again, they're showing their social distancing. Even the Hamilton High hallway, you know, you always think it's so crowded there, but I don't know if it's with the masks, but they just seem to be quiet, you know, in between classes. So, it seems to be working well. And again, lots of signage around for everyone. And since the playground equipment's off limits for us, the classroom teachers and phys ed teachers have been very creative in getting the kids outside. I saw just foot races, you know, kids just running. On the bottom right, you can see the two girls. And the district had provided water bottles for all the students. It's the white, you know, bottle with the blue lid. They're playing bocce ball, doing some things inside. So, again, kudos to the teachers and creative on some stuff. Sanitizing and that's big. The one at Fairwood, every school has these hallway hand sanitizers. And this particular class was going to art, and so each student had to sanitize their hand. Cleaning the cafeteria tables, bathrooms. They clean the bathrooms every 90 minutes. They're spraying, you know, the shelving for the cafeteria. Brad Combs is cleaning the door handles of the door, and again, there's the signage there for everyone. And every staff member is supposed to take their temperature before they come into school and record it. If you forget, obviously, you can come in and do it there, but all visitors have to have their temperatures taken as well. And then, starting this week, we're able to open our libraries. And so, the library clerks have designated these plastic bins. So, if I turn in my library book on a Monday, the library clerk doesn't put it back on the shelves until the next Monday. So, they wait a whole week. So, they have a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday bin. And it's hard to see on the top right, but we have plexiglass on the front office counters to have some, you know, social distancing too. You'll even see a table in the front there. So, again, kudos to our staff for getting all that done and ordered, and it seems to be working well. It's like a sneeze guard, if you will, at a buffet dinner. And then in the lunch, again, there's social distancing. You can see the markings on the floor for the lunch line to keep people social distance and follow the traffic flow, if you will. And then we talked about the buses. Everybody was worried, you know, about the cleanliness of the buses. And they, as you can see, they clean in-between routes after school. And even at Bridgeport, the teacher told the student to stay on the sidewalk until the other girl gets into her seat. So, they're making sure that they're doing a good job with that. And I think one reason we're successful is, I think, the staff is leading by example. The very first day of our administrative retreat, we have Andre, Trish, Andrea, and Rick demonstrating wearing the masks and social distancing. And I think that's one reason the kids, I think, are doing well is because the staff is leading the charge. Even the Lyndon Leopard is wearing his mask in Crawford Woods Wildcat. And there were, you know, preschoolers, they won't be able to keep them on. Well, they're doing a pretty good job. And again, I think because the leaders are the role models and they want to be, you know, pleasers. And they're very creative with their masks too, so they're fun. So, I just end it, you know, hashtag, "We got this." We had a lot of things from spring to the start of school that has come up to us. And even the marking band, they're very impressive. They're doing their social distancing and their program, so they do a nice job as well. And then one, this one on the left says, "Welcome back," you know, because kids love to hug, and it's hard, you cannot do that. So, they do an air hug, or they wave, or curtsy, so different ways to say hi, to say, you know, "I acknowledge you. Let's get the school year started." So, I say, I mean, Mike has been out in the schools, and I think he could tell you, we started pretty good.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you. Nice to see what's going on out in the buildings.
Yeah, they're doing great.
Kudos to our staff.
Yeah, I want to say a shout out to the custodians. Our buildings are usually, or actually, always are pristine, and it's even more so now. Oh, you're going to use that? I'm sorry. It's great. And we're just going to pause here just for a few minutes here while Mike sets that up.
Lauren, you want to get in the closet?
No.
I know.
I do have to say that, I was talking to a parent today, and her daughter's in third grade, and they've gotten to the point, the little girl comes home, gets off the bus, is walking around the house with her mask on because she's so used to wearing it all the time. And she has to remind her daughter to take the mask off because they're just used to it.
I get my mask put on, you know.
Yes.
Take it off, you know.
So, I heard a good one that parents said, "We..."
will be moving forward with the second quarter, as we continue to gather more information and learn a little bit more about schools during this time. First of all, we started this year in the hybrid model, and what we did is we worked about five to six months on various modes of instructional pieces for our students. We collaborated in excess of 30 different occasions with the health commissioners of both Butler County, Warren County, as well as the city of Hamilton. We've taken information from local area superintendent. We also, I had a personal conversation with the governor regarding where we are and what we're doing with schools. And we gathered all that information, and we made the decision, as did other districts near us, to start a hybrid model. This was due to the information we had, safety concerns, requirements, regulations for our students and staff. And it was an alternative to starting completely remote, and it allowed students to receive direct instruction at least a few days a week. I'm going to stand here and tell you right now, there is absolutely zero substitute for having a student in front of a class with a group, with a, a teacher. There's no substitute for that. And so we're looking for different alternatives where we can still have some of that, and yet meet many of the regulations. And we did that, and that was the decision on starting school. Learned, and what we've analyzed during the first quarter, and what you've heard here tonight, is that virtual learning was challenging, especially with elementary students. It is very difficult to teach a second grader phonics and teach a student how to read at that early elementary level on Google Classroom or through some type of computer program. What we found was we believe that mandating masks in schools has really, really assisted in reducing and eliminating the spread of the virus. And we've also learned that our kids participating in high school sports relatively have done so with no impact on the spread of the virus. Those were not results that we anticipated, but I think a lot of times, as, as good educators and good leaders, you take information and you make decisions based off the results of the information that you have. To date, we have had seven total positive student cases in our district from the beginning of the school year till now. Those involve three different families over three buildings. We have 13 buildings in our district, not including central office and the transportation facility. So we're talking about a very, very small group of students, and in no time was the virus contracted due to any school-related activity. This was all things that, that were done outside the school setting that would have happened regardless of what we were doing with school. Building protocols, wearing masks, social distancing, use of sanitizer, has been very successful in helping combat this. And right now, we have not had, we've had some concerns with quarantines, but not to a point where staffing has been limited where we would have to shut down a building due to that. And our biggest challenge is still with busing and with transportation. Moving forward, we are going to recommend that, starting the beginning of the second quarter, which is October 14th, right after our fall break, that we bring all students that choose that option to come back five days a week, and we would start that on Wednesday, October 14th. We would also recommend that students that are currently enrolled in the Virtual Learning Institute have the opportunity to return to the five-day-a-week model. I think that's really important. We've changed the rules a little bit. We've changed the rules a little bit, I think we have to give parents opportunity. We initially told parents that they had to stay into virtual learning for a semester. Two things have changed. Number one, the first thing that has changed is the fact that we've analyzed a quarter of virtual learning, and we are very concerned with our elementary students, and we have an obligation to change course if we are doing something that we do not think's effective. And the second thing I think that has changed is more data. Data has came in and supported the fact that, you know what, we're doing some things that are working in our schools for the safety of our students and staff, and bringing students back into that five-day model is something that is not only, not only doable, it's something that after speaking today on the phone with the city of Hamilton Health Commissioner, she recommends us giving it a try because we have been so diligent with, with our actions. There are going to be challenges, and I want to be very transparent and clear on these challenges. There are risks with bringing kids back full-time, and the first risk is quarantines. There is a possibility that we would have a significant number of staff members quarantined, where we may have to shut a building down for 14 days just due to staffing issues. What that means is that if you have a secondary or possibly a high school son or daughter, and you have another son or daughter that's in the elementary, and you rely on that little child for childcare, that could be a challenging situation because the high school could be open, and the elementary could be quarantined for 14 days. So that, that's a challenge. We're going to have some compromises with social distancing. Obviously, if we have 7,000 or 8,000 students in our building every day, as opposed to 34, 3,500, there's some give and takes with that. But we believe that with wearing masks, with, with continuing with the guidelines that we've already established with social distancing, with sanitation, with, with some of our lunchroom protocol, and still having a significant number of students in our Virtual Learning Institute, that we're going to be able to comply with, with many of those requirements, and it's doable. And the third piece is transportation, and I mentioned that a little earlier, because there may be days in which our buses are running a little late. It may be due to the fact that we may be down several bus drivers due to quarantines, not necessarily positive cases, but if you're quarantined for 14 days, you can't come into work. And worst-case scenario, we may not be able to provide transportation for that particular day. I think a more likely scenario would be maybe having buses that have to double routes, and kids may be getting to school a little bit later than, than what their normally scheduled time is. Given all of that, I still think it's a calculated risk, and a positive one, to try this five-day-a-week and see what's happened. I have spoken with other area districts, and Butler County is very split. You've got several districts that are completely remote, you've got several districts that go completely full-time, and you've got several districts that are on the hybrid. I spent an awful lot of time talking to superintendents of those districts that are open five days a week. Once again, gathering more data, asking them their challenges, asking them how things have gone. And quite frankly, things in those districts have gone better than what any of them expected. We all were on Zoom calls with, with the health commissioners this entire summer from April through August, and we all were using that same information. But given all the information we've been able to gather, our recommendation will be starting the second quarter, which is October 14th, to go back in a five-day-a-week student model, give parents the opportunity to opt out of virtual learning at the beginning of the second quarter, with the understanding that if some kids will want to stay in that mode, and they'll stay in there until the end of the semester, which is perfectly fine, but others would have that opportunity to do that. And I, and I think as we've gathered more information, it's become apparent that, I think this is doable. And, and I think that the experts that I've spoken to also believe that as well. I am not a health expert, you know, but I am smart enough to analyze data, and to analyze data in June when you don't have anything really live, and to analyze something now, where we've got a quarter's worth of data to analyze, we would be foolish not to change courses if the data suggests that we can do so. And once again, I'm going to tell you, the most valuable asset we have in this district is our teachers. And putting those students in front of our teachers every single day is what we have to get back to, that's what our business is. And I, I think there's a significant difference in what's going on virtually with the virtual learning at the secondary level as opposed to the elementary level because of the nature, nature of the curriculum. And teaching, having an 11th grader get a credit in government as opposed to a second grader reading is a significantly different approach to instruction. One is probably more conducive to a virtual learning environment, the other, I think, I think the interaction. I haven't mentioned some of the things that we don't talk about. We talk about all these measurable things, we talk about grades, we talk about state testing. What about socialization of students? What about mental health of students? Some of that, some of that is lacking with the virtual or hybrid model as well. They're only getting two days of socialization. In some cases, we have students that need more services that are provided in our schools, and they're not getting those access, getting access to those five days a week. We're going to be able to do those things as well, and I, and I think that that's critically important. And so my recommendation to this board tonight would be to move forward, to communicate this through the appropriate channels tomorrow, and communicate that to our community tomorrow afternoon. And we do have a stringent timel-, look, excuse me, timeline. And that timeline would include a window of time for parents to make a choice. They're going to have about a seven-day window to make a choice on staying in virtual or staying in, in our buildings. And the reason for the very tight timeline is simply staffing. There's going to be some staff changes that will need to take place in order to accommodate this, and we need a little time to do that by the end of the first quarter. So we, we will be communicating this, i- i- if the board's acceptable to this recommendation starting, you know, tomorrow, and hopefully get all of our kids back in school on October 14th.
Mike, I just want to say thank you on, on so much hard work going into this. I still, I like the idea that, you know, the Virtual Learning Institute isn't the most perfect opportunity for students to learn, but at least the parents still have that option if they choose to take that option. And I know that with everything that's going on, I think this is a great option for our teachers, or for our, our students and families. One thing that kind of concerned me was the transportation issue. If I remember, I know we have some way to notify, notify parents if buses are running late or...
We do.
We have, okay, so there is a way, if, I mean, you brought that up as a possibility of a concern about transportation.
And you have to, you have to understand this, right now, if we have some bus drivers out, we can double up routes because those buses aren't nearly as full. I wouldn't be able to do that when we bring this mask group back, so I'm going to have to run a second route that may run a little bit later. Now, hopefully, we don't have those issues, or we can, or we can minimize those issues. But I, I, I would be less than transparent if I didn't bring that up as a possible concern with, with our parents moving forward, ju- just in preparation. It may never occur. It may occur very infrequently, but I, I think it's something worth mentioning.
Thank you.
Mike, I think, again, I, all the work that you've done, and the administration's done, and the teachers, and, and taking care of our kids, thank you. Just in case, I know there's going to be some parents that are going to be very happy about this because they'll, you know, they'll have their kids in school five days a week, and some that don't understand that you can't just quickly move to that, you, you have to have some time to, to switch back, and just making sure that you can reiterate that of what, how long it takes us to kind of really gear up and be able to do that.
And really, this is a natural time to do it. We have about two weeks left in the first quarter. That last week is for quarter exams at the secondary level. So it would be foolish for us to move with exactly about 10 days left in the quarter to do that. So some of it factors into timing. If this were the beginning of September, we would not wait. We have the data now to support this, but we need to complete this first quarter of school, and so there, there's great implications, there, there's staffing implications, we also have our, our fall break coming up at, at October 12th and 13th. So calendar played as much of a factor in it as the timing did with staffing, but there's a lot of variables involved with that. But I think the natural time to do that is at the quarter break. It, it's a clean break for everyone, one way or another.
And I agree, I totally agree.
Yeah. And, and your point's well taken, though.
Mr. Holbrook, again, as I've said over the summer, I appreciate the hard work you and your staff put together, as like you said, and Mr. Baker has said, has commented on, this is not an easy thing to just switch over. And the flexibility that you've, you've had with your, you and your staff getting this done, it seems as if you're almost two steps out in front each time, with, that you've already thought about this before, and, and you know how to implement it, and now it's there.
Well, Steve, I appreciate that. We, we, we have an awful lot of good people in Hamilton, and I want to publicly compliment our parents for their flexibility. We talked about the flexibility of staff, and, and they've been wonderful, but, you know, our, our parents, you know, and I can understand being impatient and wanting their kids back in school, we want that as much as they do, but they have been flexible, and they have worked with us, and, you know, we, we are using data to make these decisions. We're, we're, we're using that, and that's what we're doing. And, you know, we're taking, once again, I said it earlier, a little bit of a calculated risk on bringing students back five days a week. I believe it's the right decision, I, I believe it's the right decision for our students, and that is where I base all of my decisions on, the data, and what is the best for our students. And getting our students back with our teachers five days a week is the number one goal that we have, working through this very unprecedented situation. But thank you, Mr. Isgr.
Mike, I want to say, a couple, one question, one comment first, I totally support you. I think, I just want everyone in Hamilton to understand the complexity and the time and the, just some of the things that had to go on for this to happen, for us to switch to the model we did switch to, and then now we're switching back. So it's totally, this is totally unprecedented, unprecedented, and just, just the fact that we're doing this, I want to say thank you for your professionalism, and just, just the things that you've, Andrew's dad, it's really a team effort. But also, will we need to vote on this, or is it more of an administrative action?
There's, there's no, it's my understanding, there's no vote required. You gave me the autonomy to switch from model to model at, at an earlier recommendation in August, or I think it was the beginning of August when we did that. But it's still healthy and good to have the board hear this discussion, to hear it in work session, to have comment and, and discussion on this, and so that's the reason we're doing that this evening.
Okay. All right. Do you have any, anything else?
I do not. I believe next up is going to be Mr. Wright, and he's going to quickly talk a little bit about athletics, and all of this plays into, into play in the fact that as we start opening up, we have to start looking at our facilities and, and what we're doing with our facilities. And I think Mr. Wright's going to speak a little bit about that. Thank you.
Mike, do you want me to speak up there or here a bit?
Mike, do you want me to speak up there or here, okay? I think I'll take the mask off also so you can hear me a little bit better. First of all, just a quick update. This is really an athletics update, but it's also kind of a facilities update as well. One of the things that we're looking at is, as Mr. Holbrook said, you know, we're about halfway through our fall sports season with our high school, middle school sports. We have been allowing our youth feeder programs to use our facilities for our own individual students that are Hamilton City School students, mainly our football programs, our youth football programs because they have been outdoor use facilities. We have been limiting all of our indoor facilities from any use by anyone from the outside and even our youth programs using those facilities. So we have not allowed youth volleyball programs or anything like that to compete. Part of that reasoning is because we know that obviously through this whole pandemic, the restrictions indoors are much more stringent than they are outdoors. One of the things that we are kind of coming up on, though, is getting into this winter sports season. So I know right now we're starting to get some questions from our youth sports organizations, particularly like our Blue Stars organization with youth basketball and some of the other programs I'm sure are going to be following in behind as far as using some of our indoor facilities. One of the things that I'm here tonight to kind of, again, recommend and have discussion about is as we move into these winter sports seasons, what will be the status of our facilities within the district? One of the things that I do want to share with you tonight because I've spoken to the president of our Blue Stars Association and he has given me kind of their league requirements as far as what their restrictions and what their requirements are moving forward. So I included that in the packet that you have this evening. And I do want to highlight a couple of things as we go through this process. And I think this is going to serve as a good model for us moving forward to make educated decisions about what programs and what facility usage can be moving forward throughout this winter sports season because we know the majority, if not all, of the winter sports, either our own programs or our youth programs are going to be indoors. So one of the things that, I kind of want to go through this, the Blue Stars play in a premier league called the Cincinnati Premier Youth Basketball League. So one of the things, if you look down through here, there's some health and safety guidelines. So I want to highlight a few things for you tonight. One of the things that's not actually on here that when I spoke with the president of the group about was that all practices will be athletes and coaches only. There will be no parents permitted into the gym for any of those practices. So you can drop your kid off, you can sit out in the parking lot, you can drop them off, come back when the practices are over, but it will be only athletes and only coaches in the facility during the practice sessions. So when we get into kind of the game situations, as we get into late October, early November when they start playing games, parents and coaches must report to their community basketball organization, any, and to the health department if a child has contracted COVID-19. So they're going to follow the same guidelines as what we do within the school. We know within a 24-hour period, we have to report those things to the health department. They're going to follow those same guidelines. Only two adults are going to be permitted and they have to be a parent or legal guardian into any game within the Cincinnati Premier Youth Basketball League. Our facilities use, we do have practices that take place. Nearly all of the games that take place in our district are at the freshman campus is where they, that's kind of our central location of where games would happen. The adults must enter the gym with the player. The player cannot come in and then all of a sudden an adult come in later. They must come in as a family, enter the gym as a family, leave the gym as a family. There is going to be no separation, one person coming, another person coming 15 minutes late, anything like that. They're going to come in as a family, it'll be the player, the two parents or guardians, and then they'll leave as a family as well. If you are entering the gym, you're required to have on a face mask and continue to wear a face mask at all times. There will be removal from the facility if you are not wearing a face mask. They will have gym monitors, they're actually suggesting two, but one is at least required by the league. If you don't follow those guidelines, you're banned from the league and you won't be playing basketball anyway.
Mike Naas.
Sure.
What's a gym monitor? I mean, is this someone that they provide?
Correct. No, it'd be somebody that they provide. So basically, basically, most of these youth leagues have what they call gym monitors, which is normally like the president of the basketball league. It would be a coach, a parent, somebody who monitors the gym. If someone was to, you know, get a little raucous in the stands, they'll go ask them to settle down or leave, those types of things. So it's just basically a compliance officer is really what it's going to be. The next thing is they're recommending no food or drinks to be sold at all. If you are going to have a cafeteria or a concession stand, it all has to be prepackaged items. There will be no packaged items within those schools being sold at any of these facilities. The only two teams that are allowed in the gym at any given time are the two teams that are playing. They're also flexing time between the games, so there will be a 15-minute time period where one group will enter the gym, the two teams will enter the gym, the families will enter the gym. When they leave, there's a 15-minute time period where cleaning will take place, disinfecting will take place, and then the next team will be able to come into the facility at that point. So it's going to be highly monitored and a lot of disinfecting between the two contests that would take place. Post-game talks must occur outside of the building and must be socially distanced. So as games are finished, you're not going to see coaches take a huddle and go down to the end of the gym or go to the bench and have that conversation. They'll have to take the kids, they'll have to move outside of the facility to have that post-game discussion. The last couple of things here, the admission workers, so a lot of these facilities charge admissions, the admission workers must wear masks and gloves when taking money from spectators that may be coming into the gym. And then obviously, the fans must stay six feet apart in the gyms. And then, as I said, the start time is going to be gapped every 15 minutes. So what I'm, I guess what I'm, the reason I read this is because as we start looking at this, especially with our feeder-type programs, our youth programs, these are kids that are in our buildings every day. If we go with, you know, Mr. Holbrook's recommendation and we start bringing these students back into the buildings five days a week, full-time, I think we have to look at potentially opening up our indoor facilities specifically for our youth feeder-type of programs. I think we still monitor whether we're going to open up our facilities to any outdoor groups at this point. And I would suggest that we hold off on that because I'm not sure that everyone's going to come to us with a plan as stringent as this planned. I also think this kind of serves as our guideline. If there's other programs within our district, let's say youth wrestling programs or, you know, any other sort of program within our district that wants to use our facilities, even our intermurals, I think, you know, we're looking at these types of guidelines. We want to make sure that we have a plan so that we don't put our students, don't put our parents, don't put our volunteers in danger kind of moving forward with this process. So basically, what I'm recommending is that we do look at starting to talk about and allow some of our youth sport programs to start using some of our indoor facilities, which we have not done up to this point. We've basically limited to our only high school athletes. But we've really been going with athletics since about July as we started doing that phase one, phase two, phase three open-up period back with our fall sports in July. And we've had, again, as Mr. Holbrook indicated, we've had virtually no incidents. The few incidents that we have had has all been situations where it's been something that's been spread outside of that actual activity. We have not had athlete-to-athlete spread of any sort of COVID situation within our district. Yes, knock on wood there, Mr. Isgro. So again, I just wanted to give you a quick update. If you have questions about any of this, I'd be happy to answer them at this point. But again, I think, you know, as we start looking at, again, looking at the data, looking at where we're at right now, I think this is a good time for us to start looking at potentially opening up some of our indoor facilities for specifically our Hamilton City School kids.
Mike, I just continue to be impressed with the amount of detail that this district goes through to make sure that these kids are safe. And it certainly makes sense that we're going to open it up for our students that would play like that.
Yeah, you know, safety has to continue to be our number one priority. And if we're following the guidelines, these guidelines are even more stringent than I think what are required by the governor and by the state. And as long as we can have these types of plans in place, I think we need to try to accommodate our students and our student athletes.
I was going to say, Mr. Wright, this would be a great board of sites for the future for, if we ever open up our facility further.
Yes. Any other questions?
I think we're good. Thanks again, Mike.
Thank you.
I too will. Away from everybody. Take that off so you can hear me just a little better.
You probably feel a little better now.
Yes, it does feel better. I will tell you that. Yes, you got to hear me. Pay attention. Two items for you tonight. Item number one is CCIP note number 445. And what that means is that's a grant note, gives us guidance on grants. This particular one is on CARES funding, ESSER funds. And we've talked about this a little bit in recent months. And this particular piece was for the non-public funds. And I had explained to you in previous communications that the state came along and put the allocation out there. It was a higher allocation, then they came along and said, no, wait, there's a lower allocation. And then they said, well, wait, there's going to be a comment period on some rules. And so we were probably about six, eight weeks into it at that point. And that was a one-month period. Two weeks into that period, they said, the rules are going to be the rules and they're not going to change. And so go ahead and set your meetings and pick which method you're going to use. We picked the income, low-income method, which funded the kids from our district that were in the non-public schools that actually attended our district. It was the lower amount. And so we thought we were good to go. And lo and behold, last week, they came out and said, that interim rule we put out in July 2nd, forget about it, it's gone. And the rule that the non-publics around the state were advocating for, the higher amount, is gone. You have to go with a low-income amount, which is the one we selected. So the good news here is we are not, like other districts around the state of Ohio, calling in our non-public schools right now, having discussions with them on how to lower these budget amounts, which in many cases, these districts have spent the money already, these non-publics. So thankfully, we're not in that situation, but it's not all done yet. They haven't really put out the final numbers. I think what's going to happen here, looking at the way the calculations are done, is I think we're going to see some very slight changes for those five buildings. We have seven students that I understand are, that attend buildings outside this district. They'll get some dollar amounts, not very significant dollar amounts. So I think we'll just see some very small changes to all five of them. And again, we'll do that as soon as ODE comes out with the information. And I had a communication with them again today and they're not quite there. So I anticipate in the next week, we will see another CCIP and that's going to be about number 448, I believe, because there have been a couple since then on other topics. So you can read that at your leisure and that includes some good information in there. The other item I want to speak to you briefly about tonight is inside millage. We are going through a process right now called reappraisal. And it happens every six years in every county and every three years you have an update, but the big one is the reappraisal. And the county auditor's office is finishing it up right now. We thought that was going to be somewhere around 10%, 12% based upon home sales. We thought that about three or four months ago. We found out probably a month or so ago, that's going to be closer to 15%. And there's some discussion at the State Department of Taxation whether it should be 20%. So what we know at this point, it's going to be somewhere between 15% and 20%. As that occurs, your tax rate drops. And our tax rate currently at 23 mils and change is going to drop to a level that would hit the 20-mil floor potentially. There is 1.27 mils you have out there on inside millage in the general fund. You have the opportunity to move that to the permanent improvement fund. What that does for you, it's going to generate about $1.4 million that stays on the table, doesn't fall off the table, it moves over to your permanent improvement fund. You're going to be able to fund your textbooks, your technology, your school buses, all those types of things. And also the infrastructure, which is the most important, all these buildings we have that need things. So it will change the discussion when we're talking about capital budgeting in this district from what can we do to what will we do? You know, we're not going to really be sitting there talking about, well, we don't have the money to do that right now, put it off a year or two. And so that's going to be a very good thing for the district. We want you to consider and I've provided you some information. I'm not going to go through all that. But again, I think the increase overall to the district could be anywhere from 828 to 188. As you hit that 20-mil floor, which is going to happen, you're going to start seeing increases in general funding. That will happen. It happened back in 2003, 2004, and 2005 in this district before we had the crisis of 2008 for housing. So it's a natural phenomenon. It will happen. And this is just a good way, a very prudent way to manage your tax rate structure. So I've provided you some information again as to how that will work. We need to have a hearing notice that I'm recommending that we're going to go ahead and put out tomorrow. I don't need to vote on it other than just kind of the nod of the head tonight that we're in agreement, if you like what we're talking about here. And that hearing notice, I've provided what that would look like. And we would have a public hearing on October 15th and at 6:45, right before our board meeting. And we would, again, we would discuss this perhaps in a little more detail that night. We'll have notices of that going out on the 28th of September and October 5th. And then following that, you can make a decision if you want to do that. And I've provided you what that looks like in the form of a resolution. Again, we did this back in 2001 in this district and we moved three mils. And it really started solidifying our ability to start doing some things on a permanent improvement basis. And so that's why we've had a good revenue stream and we've got up-to-date buses in this district. We've got maintenance vehicles that look decent, that are not 25 years old like when I walked into this district. And so, you know, I think we've got a lot to be proud of. We've got great facilities, but we need a good, steady revenue stream to continue that into the future. And it's going to create about a $3.8 million overall revenue stream by the time you're done because you currently have about a $2.4 million. Any questions on that?
Mr. Hancock, did you mean 6:15 on October 15th before the 6:30 board meeting?
Yeah, sure, why not?
6:45?
6:45. I was going at 7, but yeah, I can have that adjusted at 6:15. Thanks, sir.
Well, it's just like owning any property, you have to put money back into it. We have the most beautiful buildings of any district around here and we need, our community deserves this. So having those buildings, having a revenue stream that helps us maintain the district and make it develop its pride in our schools and our city, I think this is a wonderful way for us to keep those facilities up to date and how they need to be, along with all the other things that come with permanent improvement. I think it's a great way to handle the situation.
Very appreciative.
Mr. Hancock, I have said this joke many a times, but in serious at times, and I'm serious now, for our school district, you have been, over the years, a great steward of our funds and our money and where it gets spent and how to squeeze a dollar out of a nickel. And that's a compliment.
Well, thank you, Mr. Isgro, but it's, again, it's a team effort. I provide you what I hope is always good financial information so you can make timely decisions. I do that with the administrative team and give them the best advice and then allow them to make the decision they feel they need to make. And it's worked out very well, you know, over almost three decades at this point. So let's keep her going.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hancock. At this time, we're going to take this, a short recess here and we'll be back in about five minutes.